It's 5:30. Board President Oscar Salinas is not present right now, so I'll be conducting the meeting. For Wednesday, May 19, 2021, 5:30, we have a board work session. Item number one, I call this meeting to order. Item number two, roll call and declaration of quorum.
Espíritu Santo President.
Alda Benavides President.
Alex Cantú President.
Mary Evández President.
Armin Garza President. I do declare quorum. Everybody can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next item on our agenda, public comments. Do we have anybody signed up there?
We have no public comments, Mr. Garza.
Okay, well, moving on to item number five, information and requirements for the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Funds.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Mr. Martín Munoz, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, will lead us in this part of the discussion. Board of Trustees, you do have a booklet that was placed in your, in a blue folder. That is, it's called the SR3, and so that is the document that we're going to be used. It's also going to be projected on the two screens. Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Madam Superintendent, on the screen and on your packet on page two, you do have the agenda for today's presentation. We will first be going over the information and requirements for the American Rescue Plan and in the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Plan, which is, in this case, SR3. Then we will be covering the 2020 to 2023 ARP SR3 federal grant application, district timeline effectiveness. And then the third thing we're going to cover today is the ARP SR3 allowable expenditures to meet student and staff needs. So moving on to page three, this slide is a repeat of a previous presentation we had shared with you. This is the district allocation. The total allocation amount would be $147,335,197. The initial allocation, which is two-thirds of that amount, is $98,223,465. The remaining allocation will be $49,111,732. Now, all funds must be expended by September of 2024. So moving on to the first part of our presentation, information and requirements for the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Plan. One of the things that we need to keep in mind when it comes to the expenditure plan, at least 20% of those SR3 funds must be set aside to address learning loss type activities. SR3 does have a maintenance of equity provision. What that means is that in fiscal years 2022 and fiscal year 2023, districts are not allowed to reduce per pupil funding for any high poverty school at a rate greater than overall cuts in per pupil spending across all schools served by the district, or and reduce per pupil staffing in any high poverty schools at a rate greater than overall cuts in per pupil staffing across all schools served by the district. All funds, again, must be expended by September of 2024, and all expenses must support the return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan. The acronym is RIPICs. So the return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan. The district plan for the safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services required for all districts, including those that have already returned to in-person instruction. In order for us to be able to develop and implement this plan, we must first get stakeholder input. So the district must engage in meaningful consultation with stakeholders and give the public an opportunity to provide input in the development of the plan. Who are those stakeholders? You can see a list of them on page eight. These need to include students, families, school and district administrators, which would include special ed administrators, teachers, principals, school leaders, other educators, and school staff. Now, to the extent these groups are in the district, we must also include, and again, only if they're in the district, tribes, civil rights organizations, including disability rights organizations, and stakeholders representing the interests of children with disabilities, English learners, children experiencing homelessness, children in foster care, migratory students, children who are incarcerated, and other undeserved students. So the plan has to include, or must consider, the safe return to in-person instruction and the continuity of services. And this plan has to address the following two things. The first one, how the district will maintain the health and safety of students, educators, and other school and district staff, and how we are adopting the CDC's safety recommendations. How the district is going to ensure continuity of services, including but not limited to services to address students' academic, academic needs, and students and staff's social, emotional, mental health, and other needs, which may include student health and food services. Now, the following slides is a list of the CDC recommendations that our plan needs to consider and include. First one is universal and correct wearing of masks. Modifying facilities to allow for physical distancing, like, for example, use of cohorts or potty. Hand washing and respiratory etiquette. Cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, including improving ventilation. Contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine in collaboration with state, local, territorial, or tribal health departments. Moving on to page 11, diagnostic and screen testing. Efforts to provide vaccinations to school communities. Appropriate accommodations for children with disabilities in respect to health and safety policies. And coordination with state and local health officials. So these CDC recommendations need to be in our RIPICs plan. Now, we do have a six-month review requirement. Once we develop it and it gets approved, we do need to meet and review it every six months. So the district must review its plan every six months and as appropriately, or as appropriate revise it through the end of the SR3 grant period, including seeking public comment and incorporating such input into plan revisions, taking into consideration the timing of significant changes to CDC guidance on reopening schools. If the district revises its plan at the six-month required period, the revised plan must address each of the aspects of safety currently recommended by the CDC at the time, or if the CDC has updated its safety recommendations at the time the district is revising its plan, each of the updated safety recommendations need to be included. Now, plan requirements. The district's ARP SR3 plan must be in an understandable and uniform format, written in a way that is, to the extent, practical, written in a language that parents can understand, and if not practical, orally translated. And also upon request by a parent who is an individual with a disability, provided in an alternative format accessible to that parent. Once it's developed and approved, our plan does need to, we do have some posting requirements. It has to be posted on our district website within 30 days of receiving the grant NOGA. Report in SR3 application for funding must include the district's website address, because TEA staff will monitor the website for posting and the contents of the plan. So currently, we are in the development of the plan. Once it's developed, we will bring it back to you so you can review it and approve it. And that was the first part of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. On page 16 of your presentation binder, you'll see the timeline of activities that the district is participating in to be able to get the consultation that is required of this grant. And so if you look on that timeline of events, from May 4th to May 11, we finalize surveys that were going to be used with staff, parents, and students. The decision from the committees were to survey students in grades 6, 8, 9, and 11. May 12, we did have information on grant requirements and allowable expenditures to board members and the community during the board meeting discussion item. On May 13, we did provide grant information to all principals and directors. These leaders then were given a presentation for them to share the information on grant information and allowable expenditures to all school staffs and district central office personnel. From May 17 to May 21, we are providing parents information on the grant as well as school staff. May 19, today, we're doing this work session to provide the board more information and allow input from our board on expenditures. From May 17 to June 4, we will administer surveys to get input from staff, from students, and from parents. And we will also be using student focus groups and parent focus groups. The focus groups for students are going to be made up of students not represented in the surveys. We will be doing focus group with elementary students, with seventh grade students, and with 10th grade students. And we will be doing focus group with different parent groups from different campuses. From May 24 to June 4, administrators will use the grant activity form, which is an in-house document that we have, that we have written, so that we can begin to compile recommended activities based on the collection of information and recommendations that we are getting from all our stakeholders. Then on page 17, we continue with a timeline. On May the 26, Board, we will bring you a resolution of public notice, which is required, so that the public will know how they will be given information on the grant award. And so you will approve that resolution on May 26. From June 7 to June 18, we will begin the plan draft using all of the stakeholder information that we have collected. From June 21 to July 12, we will begin to share the plan and collect feedback from all stakeholders. It will be posted on our web page. From July 12 to July 17, we will finalize the plan. The application itself is due on July 27, and as Mr. Munoz stated, we have until September 2024 to expend the funds. So that is the timeline of activities. Are there any questions or any comments or any other recommendations for consultation from any of our stakeholders, board members? Thank you. That concludes that item, Mr. Garza.
Moving on to item number seven, ARP SR3 allowable expenditures to meet student staff needs.
Thank you. This next section of the presentation includes the allowable expenditures. And Board of Trustees, we did present these last week. I don't want to go through all of them. I will highlight some of the ones. On page 19, as Mr. Munoz explained, these interventions do have to address the academic impact of lost instruction and respond to academic, social, and emotional and mental health needs of kids. On page 20, there's two thresholds that all activities have to be scrutinized under, and one of those is the extent to which the funds are used to prevent and mitigate, to prevent and mitigate strategies to the greatest extent practicable, consistent with the most CDC, with the most recent CDC guidelines in reopening schools. And then the other part, or the other threshold being that the LEA will use the funds to address academic impact of lost instructional time through the use of research-based interventions. So starting on page 21, Board, is the allowable expenditures that were reviewed with you last week. On page 21, anything that is currently under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act and Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, as well as the Carl D. Perkins Act, can be used, can be, these funds can be expended on those things. Do you have any questions on those three items that were reviewed with you?
No, just when will you get the, I know right now you're getting, I'm going back to the dates. You're getting, you're getting feedback, right?
We're in the process of administering the surveys. Yes, Dr. Benavides.
Okay. So really, right now, we don't know what, what are some of the things that they've asked for?
We, we have a preliminary list that I'll share with you on some, on some recommendations that we have so far. And if you have any other recommendations that you would like to add to the list, well, I'll go over those with you right now. Because we do have some preliminary activities. On page 22 is other allowable expenditures. On page 23, other allowable expenditures, namely purchasing technology, providing mental health services and supports. Number 10, implementing activities such as summer learning, including online learning during the summer months. Supplemental after-school programs, providing classroom instruction or online learning to address the needs of low-income students, students with disabilities, English learners, migrant students, students experiencing homelessness, and students in foster care. Then on page 24, to address learning loss among LEA students, and it has the same population of students. And number 12, school facility repairs and improvements to enable operation of schools to reduce the risk of virus transmission and exposure to environmental health hazards.
What would be some examples of those school facility repairs?
In the discussions and question and answer sessions with TEA, it could mean HVAC improvements. It might also mean roof repairs, if that would improve the air quality of the building. It might also mean replacing windows and doors, if that will, if that would improve air quality. So those are some examples that have been provided as to what could you improve your facilities on.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On page 25, other allowable expenditures, inspection, testing, maintenance, repair, replacement, and upgrade of projects to improve air door quality in school facilities, including mechanical and non-mechanical heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, filtering, purification, and other air cleaning fans, control systems, and window and door repair and replacement. Number 14, developing strategies and implementing public health protocols to include guidance from the CDC. And then number 15, other activities that are necessary to maintain the operation and continuity of services in the LEA. This right here is a very broad area that was given to districts and could include anything under operations from transportation expenses, child nutrition services expenses, any other maintenance expenses, and also including retention of staff could be under this item right here. On page 26, I'm going to go over, these are some preliminary activities that have been given to us either by directors and different stakeholders. Provide all reading academy materials needed by the teachers. Last year, our teachers went through the reading academy training, and this is a very crucial training to help close reading gaps in students. So those would be very needed materials. We want to make sure our teachers have everything that they need to implement the reading academy. We have another cohort of teachers that's going to be going through that reading academy this year. Provide all resources to implement all school designations. As you all know, we have STEAM designated schools, STEM technology, mass media, T-STEM academies, or next-generation STEM, next-generation academies at our high school. And we want to make sure, so that we do close that gap that has been provided by the pandemic, that all our schools have all of the necessary resources to make sure that they implement their designations really well. The next one, purchase adaptive technology for students served under special education. We did at one time purchase technology and other adaptive equipment for our special ed classrooms, and this is up to be updated. So this is another area of need in the district. Provide 360-degree classroom cameras for all teachers. Some of our teachers may continue to do virtual learning. That, that may be something that our state legislature approves, and we want to make sure that, that teachers that have to do, for example, concurrent teaching, where they have to teach students virtually and students in the classroom, are able to do both well, and that students get the benefit of the teacher in the classroom, whether they're home or in the classroom, and that equipment will help with that. Provide physical education equipment for all levels. This is part of maintaining and helping students with social, emotional, as well as health. And so we want to make sure that we implement our physical education programs at a high level of excellence. So this is needed equipment. We also would like to propose summer PE athletic programs for all levels. And again, this is to mitigate social, emotional, and health needs of students. Provide fine arts resources for all our programs to include acoustics, costumes, instruments, uniforms. On page 27, build canopies for outdoor areas for elementary and middle schools. And again, this would be justifiable for the need to mitigate needs such as health and social, emotional for all our students. Provide outdoor eating areas for high school students. This would help with social distancing, especially in our high schools, where we have large populations of students and a limited amount of time where they can eat lunch. So we would like to have outdoor eating areas for our schools. Provide insulated water bottles for all students. As you know, we're converting our fountains to water bottle filling stations. Install LifeTech disinfection cube. This will help with, to spread, to decrease the spread of the virus. Provide playground equipment for elementary schools. Provide outdoor sitting areas for staff. And we will consider looking at summer wages and also training wages for the fall semester. So Board of Trustees, are there any other things that you all recommend that we add to this list?
When you say materials, materials, can this go towards maybe improving some of, I know our older middle schools, improving science labs and stuff like that?
Definitely, yes, it can go to that.
And another thing that I was, it was brought to my attention is, I know we have designated campuses. Is there any way maybe we can use these funds to hire specialized, say, if it's an engineering STEM school, maybe somebody specialized in engineer or like a teacher?
We could, it can be used for staff. It can be used for consulting basis. These funds can also be used for salaries. However, we would need to consider the long-term effect of increasing our salary cost, because we would need to make sure that those costs we can maintain beyond September 2024. But if your question is it, is it allowable? Yes, it's allowable to pay salaries.
So salaries could include even professional, like our, maybe counselors since?
It can, it can include any salary, yes. The only thing that we would need, like I said, be careful with is that we could main, that we would be able to make sure that we can maintain the salary cost after we do not have the grant funds. It can also be used on a consultative basis.
So one of them should be used in the form of stipends and, you know, term employment?
Yes, definitely. We could use it to pay stipends for after-school programs, for summer programs, for Saturday programs.
For tutoring?
So we can pay stipends to existing staff.
Excellent. How soon would we be able to use these funds? When would we know if we, we receive them?
The procedure that has been described to us is after TA receives the application, of course, there's a review process. And then after the review process, which might take a couple of weeks, we've been told, and this is just approximate time, right? Then there would be a negotiation period where some activities maybe might not be allowed, and we might need to make some revisions to our plan. That could also be another week or two. So if it's due July 27, the earliest that I am predicting we would have the money would be sometime in September.
Okay, because I know a lot of, a lot of our employees have asked us, and I know we share this within our own selves, that, you know, everybody assumes that we have this money already or these funds. And so they're asking about such things as stipends and things that they hear the districts are offering. Are the districts are offering it already because they've, is this a different?
One of the, one of the things that we have, that we do know, is that we can use this money to supplant costs, and we can go back as far as March 2020 to reclassify costs that we have had that have not been already reimbursed by the state, like technology purchases. So two different things. We can go back and reclassify those expenses. And so if we can go back to March, for example, we could do an activity maybe in, in the summer, and we could go back and reclassify that activity and kind of pay ourselves back, which is reclassifying. And I think that is how some districts that might have activities attributed to the SR3 is that they will go ahead and fund them and then reclassify them once they have the funds. In other words, pay yourself back. Because we can move as far as March 2020 to reclassify expenses. And that is one of the things that our business office is looking at. What COVID-19 expenses did we have beginning March 2020 that have not been reimbursed by the state? That we can go back and pay ourselves back, reclassify, and then be able to extend the life of this grant or use that money to do activities beyond the grant period. That's something that's allowable also.
And I know Ms. Cantú brings it up, because I think we've all received a number of calls from our local unions and our, our staff in regards to, are we putting any thought into, you know, compensating our, our staff? And I think that we've shown as a board that all of us collectively have always done what we could, that was made financial sense in order to be able to show our staff that they're, they're appreciated. We understand that they've had a huge undertaking, and, you know, we're going to try to compensate them as well as we can within reason and within our financial constraints. So, I mean, but just so the staff knows, we are going to take everything into consideration and exhaust all measures to ensure that they're compensated fair.
Thank you, Mr. Garza.
And along those lines that Mr. Garza mentioned, I know, Dr. Science, that you said that some, some of the monies can be reclassified. Have you all thought about how much money? Or have you looked at a ballpark figure of how much money you're going to reclassify? Because I know that will impact our next year's budget when you reclassify, and you will have, we will have less money to spend. And so I don't know if, if there's a ballpark figure, if you have?
I don't have that ballpark figure. I don't know, Mr. Garza or Mr. Lopez. I think they're in the next room. I don't know if they have a ballpark figure, but they, that's one of the tasks that they have been working on last week and this week. I'm not sure if they, if they can provide that, because that's what they're currently working on, but they can respond.
And then the other thing, I know you mentioned that one of the stipends that can be provided is a retention stipend for staff members that choose to stay with La Jolla ISD. And I think with the competition that is out there, that perhaps would be a good strategy. I know we've had that in the past. So that may be something for us to, to think about in terms of how we can demonstrate to staff that, that we value them and that it's important that they stay with us due to the competition that is out there.
Yes, Dr. Benavides, and that's one of the questions that we have clarified with the TEA question and answer sessions. And a retention stipend is an allowable expense as long as it can as long as it can be tied to mitigating the effects of the pandemic. So that is an allowable expense. And that's something that we'll bring to you all, and we, you know, we'll bring a recommendation, and you can give us input also as to how we want to do that.
The other thing that I wanted to, to clarify, just, I wasn't here when you all decided to continue to pay everyone during the pandemic. But I do understand that some districts are, are paying, right now they're paying stipends and they're doing all this. But not all districts chose to pay all their employees during the pandemic. And so it's kind of difficult to compare our district to other districts because, and kudos to all the, the board that was already on here because the pay continued for the staff, and that was good. They were taken care of, and that demonstrated that, you know, the board really, you know, cared about them and didn't want anyone to suffer financially. And that says a lot, because we have over 4,000 employees. And so that is, that's something that not all districts did. And that's why now some districts are able to do other things right away that we may not be able to do. But something like a retention stipend, you can do based on the people that, you know, stay with the district.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. Your point is very well taken. I think our board has really showed that they value, and they have, they have valued all our employees throughout the pandemic by making sure that everyone continued to get their salary. And other things, right? For example, the five extra days that were given to staff so that they can use in case they had any symptoms of COVID-19. The excellent insurance benefits that all of our staff continued throughout the pandemic. And even the time and a half or the preferred pay that many of our auxiliary and classified staff received during the beginning of this staff, excuse me, this year, because those were considered essential employees. And paying those employees time and a half really showed that our board values all of our employees. So thank you for your point.
And then the other thing that I'm, because we all recognize that our kids are going to be very far behind, is that the 20% that, that is required, I think it comes out to like 27 million. I don't know if you all already have a number that you're working with for what is going to go directly to students and teachers. And that's another thing, because that's our primary responsibility, is the students, and that we get them caught up, and that we make sure that they have wholesome activities once they return back to school, those that haven't. That, that we demonstrate to our community and to parents that we're doing everything possible to ensure that their kids' learning loss is being addressed. And that we're committed to that. And that we demonstrated by the decisions that we make. Once we, you get surveys and you get input from everyone, that that be, you know, a priority for all of us, because our kids are going to have to go out there and compete with other kids, and they have to be well-prepared. And I'm talking about, you know, not just increasing our numbers, taking the SAT and ACT, but making sure that our kids do well in the ACT and SAT, and that they're well-equipped so that they can feel competitive, and they can feel that we prepared them well, and that we did everything within our power to make up, you know, for a year and a half.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. The grant requires that we use 20% of the grant for, to mitigate the academic gaps of students. However, we do see with this district's larger percentage than most districts of low-income students, English learners, that we probably will need more than the 20%. And so we're trying to, our goal is that we use at least 30% of our goal to mitigate the learning loss of our students. And aside from these populations, we also know that probably all students, not just the students specified in the grant application, but all students, including our GT students, probably did have some kind of a loss or need some intervention. And so we do need to look at activities for all students. And because of that, we do anticipate, anticipate, and we plan to spend more than the 20%.
I think we can collectively say, I can safely say that I can speak for the board in the fact that we're very understanding of the demographic that we have, the fact that we have a larger number than most areas when it comes to our ESL students. And, you know, we had a lot more loss than other districts in our state. So I think we can all safely say that we all plan to, to expand a little more on that 20%, more in the 30 to 30, 40% range in order to be able to close those learning gaps. So just so the, the community knows that by no means do we feel that this is going to be a way to be able to spend money or anything like that, or whatever. We feel like if we're going to put it back into our students, we're going to invest in our students and invest in the people that invest in our students, which is our staff.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Board of Trustees, does anybody, and I did take note, Mr. Cantu of the Science Lab recommendation, does anyone have any recommendations to add to the list? Board of Trustees, you will have an opportunity to give us more feedback. The next part of your booklet, we begin a survey. And I want to ask you right now, it's your choice. We can go through the survey questions as a group, or there is a survey, a hard copy of the actual survey in your booklet. You can take it home with you, you can take your time, respond to some of those questions, give us whatever recommendations you want, and then submit back to us so that we can include your feedback as part of our stakeholder consultation activities. So tell me?
It'll be my recommendation that we take the survey home. It gives us ample time to go over it. I understand that we've been feeling a lot of phone calls in regards to possible programs and ways to close these performance gaps. So if that's okay with the rest of the board, we go ahead and take the survey home, and on our next meeting, make sure we reserve some time to, to go over what each board member brought.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Then at this time, I'll open for any questions that any of you might have or anything else that you would like at our next work session regarding the S R three.
The only question I had was the staff, and maybe I misunderstood, so please clarify for me, that the surveys were going to be for grades six, eight, nine, and 11?
Students, the student survey.
And, and the parent surveys?
The parent surveys?
The success parents and students in grade six, eight, nine, and 11. I'm just wondering, because we are losing the majority of the students in the elementary grades, and so are they?
We're going to give the survey to all parents, and I probably should have put a comma there. The survey is for all parents, comma, and students in, in those grades. Yes, thank you for clarifying that. That's a very important point. And then the students that are not going to be able to give feedback through a survey, which is elementary students, seventh grade and 10th grade, those are going to be part of focus groups. With the elementary kids, we wanted to have, not face-to-face, because it will probably be Google meets, but the counselors are going to be meeting with groups of them, and they're going to ask them, some survey questions, and then the counselors are going to be noting the students' responses. Thank you, Dr. Benavides, for that clarification.
I'm looking at the questions here you all proposed, and they pretty much cover most of all our needs.
Yes.
I think it's a good questionnaire.
Yes, I was going to refer you, Board of Trustees, you have the, the other documents that are in your folder. The first one that you should have is the Board of Trustees survey, which is, this is the one that you would fill out, right? But then we also wanted for you to have a sample of the other survey so that you can know what we're asking our stakeholders. So the next one that you have is the staff survey. And then you also have a copy of the student survey. And you have a copy of the parent or guardian survey. And the parent and guardian survey is in English and Spanish. And we are doing our staff survey in English and Spanish also. So our staff will have a choice of which one they want to use. And those are, those parents, staff, and students are just so you can have them. The one that you would respond to is the Board of Trustees survey, which is the first one in your package. Are there any other questions?
Yes, Dr. Science, on one of the lists that you have here, the considering increase summer work wages, can you explain a little bit on that? Can we go in and actually like requalify, or how can we go about and actually work with that right now?
The, the board has approved our summer school program, which includes the wages. That came up as a recommendation, so I felt like I needed to put on the list. And so we will, we will consider some adjustments. However, I would like to point out, just with the staffing, that once a, a certain salary cap is used in the district, it's very hard to go back. And so any salary increase, whether it's for summer wages or stipends, would have to be something that the district can live with beyond the grant.
Yeah, I, I would really like for y'all to revisit all the extra expenses that our, our staff did, especially our, our teachers during the time that they used their, their cell phones, the data usage, the extra electricity that they used at home. There was just so many personal resources that they had to, to purchase and invest in to make sure that the academic needs were, were done for our students. And so really take all of that into account.
Yes, that's, that's something that has not come up in the clarification meetings with TA, but definitely we will, we will find out about that possibility.
And then on top of that, just because we were talking about the pandemic and the COVID, also give some type of an incentive for those staff members that have already been vaccinated, because they themselves were making sure that they were safeguarding our students and letting our parents know that it was safe for their children to return back to school.
That is one that our HR department did ask TEA during the question-answer session. And the response to that was if, if it can be tied to reducing the spread of the virus, that that can be an allowable expense. And especially the fact that the CDC is promoting vaccination among all as a mitigation factor in spreading the virus, that that probably would be an allowable expense. And like I said, we could go back and reclassify even for, for staff members that received the vaccine several months back. We could go back to that. And also because we have hosted vaccine clinics, we could go back and reclassify some of those expenses that we had, doing the vaccine clinics also.
That was my?
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa.
How about stipends for those nurses that worked in those clinics? The, the, you know, because I know not all of them did, but some of them gave their time and?
I'm going to say that, that, I mean, specifically, we didn't ask that question, right? But the fact that, that stipends are allowed and that we can go back and reclassify expenses, I would say that that's something we could put on the application. Of course, one of the, as we're working on the application, of course, we will be careful to put only activities that we know are allowable and fall within the thresholds of the requirements. And then there is that negotiation period where we put something in there, and they might come back and say, well, this is not an allowable, so go back and redo this. But definitely, these are all good recommendations. Any other questions or comments, Board of Trustees?
I'm sure as we think of more, we'll let you know.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ochoa.
But always in the best interest of our district.
Thank you.
Well, I guess if there's no more questions or comments, I mean, on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank everybody in attendance. We'd like to thank our administrative team, especially our finance team. We understand that how much more dispelling the L's laps in regards to our SR funds and this, but we do feel that it's on the best benefit to our students and our staff that we receive this money. And we have complete faith in you all that you're going to help us administer it and find all the right programs for our students that are going to help close those performance gaps. So for that, on behalf of the board, we say thank you. And if there's nothing else, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
A motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned. Meeting is over at 6:16 PM.